Today's Tuesday, February 1st, 2022. We'll start with the flag sheet.
... of the United States of America and through the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll go into ratifying the agenda. Does anybody have any ratifications? I have a ratification of a portfolio. Ratification of sick leave policy and COVID pay. A ratification for open records. For county meetings. And from the last meeting, the county delegate. May I get a motion on approval for ratifying the agenda?
Madam Chairman, I move to ratify the agenda as amended.
May I get a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The minutes from January 4th of 2022. On the first page on discussion, one, two, three, four, five, six down. It should say, he states, the chair is one of a five member. Says she. Is there anything else? That I ask for a motion to approve the minutes from January 4th?
I'm moving excepted minutes from January 4th as amended.
Moved in second by Commissioner Marsh and Commissioner Xander. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Accounts payable. On the accounts payable, Ms. Richards, the COVID, what is that for? Of the 42, 951.
While she's looking for that, the item has come. What is, what department is that?
Morning Commissioners, that item, sorry to have to report, that item is for the LEPC that goes through our department. That particular item is a reimbursement to the Gladstone Fire Department for a purchase of a Blitz fire machine that they use. So that was decided through the LEPC. Those funds come in through there. Yes.
The COVID and that amount is part of the contributions that were approved in the
Okay.
End of December meeting. That'd be paid out in January.
Okay. And the 20,002,25 for the non-departmental?
That'd be a whole list of things that would have been sent out.
Okay, I didn't see that. I'll look. Is there any other questions on the resolution? If so, may I get a motion, please?
Addition to it, I guess, the addition that we got yesterday. Make the motion.
I'll second that.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion. Okay. Oh, sorry about that. Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Xander?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Sheriff Lee?
Chair Commissioners, good morning. Highlights for the Stark County Sheriff's Department for the month of January 2022. Total calls for service for January were 1,207. This is up from 1,146 last year. 220 traffic stops, this is up from 193 last year. 70 of those stops from the city of Dickinson, 150 were in the county and neighboring small towns. 261 public relations stops, this is up from 217 last year. 12 bar checks, that's down from three last year. Seven theft-related calls for service, that's up from, up one from six last year. Had 18 K-9 usages, had two truck reg stops. Part of that being so low, of course, is the cold weather and then her vehicle was down for most of the month. She has a brand-new vehicle, which I believe just hit the road yesterday. The one you guys approved. We had 26 agency assists, that's down from 44 last month. Responded to only seven accidents last month, which is low, which is obviously a good thing. Two of those were injury and the remainder were property accidents. Had 73 total arrests for the month of January. One of the things we're looking to improve on in the upcoming year here is our suicide prevention efforts. As it stands, in 2021, North Dakota ranked 12th in suicides per capita. And from what we're seeing, not only in the southwest region of North Dakota, but around the state, that's going to go up exponentially. I don't know what's too up in your groups, as it may be, if you could spread the word on that 2-on-1 line. I would appreciate that. We're talking about, in fact, I shouldn't say we're talking, we're going to go ahead and move the Civil Division to the courthouse, starting March 1st, unless anybody has a major issue with that. Our Civil Division consists of Sergeant Kiesler, Corporal Poikis, and Deputy Bedilas. They would take the old Veterans Affairs Office downstairs. Few reasons for that, obviously that creates more office space for us, but that wasn't the bulk of the decision. There's going to be more of a presence in the courthouse, both with vehicles outside and inside. We're having more issues in the courtrooms as far as people acting out, so that gives us a better response time. And speaking to a lot of employees in the courthouse, there seems to be, they're very receptive to it, there seems to be a feeling of more comfort having those guys in the building coming and going, so is there any issues or comments about that?
No, I think we should do a formal motion on it, though.
Okay.
But the bigger challenge is how do you spell the last names of the two of the deputies that you pronounced? That's fine, I'm just pulling your leg.
Okay.
So at the conclusion of your report, I'll make a motion.
All right, sounds good. One last thing, we have a couple of tasers that we no longer use. We purchased new tasers over the last several years, starting before I was in office. So all the guys have the new version of the tasers. We have a couple what are called X26Ps that we no longer use, the police department still uses those. What I'm asking you guys is if we could give those to the PD in trade of, we're going to put on a large training for our whole department for defensive tactics. They're going to have a couple guys, obviously dedicated to that program, plus we use their Vertrim machine and things like that. So those tasers are about, we figure about worth, excuse me, $500 apiece, so I guess I need a motion to give those two tasers to the police department in trade for training. They also do recertify our taser instructors, I guess, at no cost as well.
You want that motion now?
Yes, please.
Madam Chairman, I move that the sheriff's department be allowed to transfer two tasers to the Dickens Police Department in exchange for some training?
Motion with the tasers is our second.
A second.
Proved in seconded, is there any discussion? So do roll call vote. Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer, I mean Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Xander? Chair votes aye, motion carried.
All right, there's no other questions, that's all I have.
I have a comment. On your two-on-one program, every once in a while in my business, I have people that come and talk to me about problems. I'm not a psychiatrist, but I have referred to the two-on-one and the last young person did come back to me and said it was very helpful, so. I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you.
Maybe that 2-on-1 hotline could also go on our website? Okay. Q, I would ask for, also for a motion for the move?
Madam Chairman, I move that we allow the relocation of the Civil Division of the Sheriff's Department into the lower-level former Veterans Service Office, effective March 1st.
Okay, motion on Civil to move in the basement of the courthouse in the old Veterans Office, may I get a second? Second by Commissioner Xander.
Just, just one quick discussion point. I want to confirm that there would be no administrative requirements for those three individuals down there?
Can you be more specific?
Well, you're going to do all the admin, so you don't need additional staff to relocate the three officers down there. Any, any of that duties would be done up at the LEC?
Correct.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Xander?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. County Road, Mr. Heiser.
Well, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Just want to give you a little update on the NACE, or North Dakota Association of County Years Convention this weekend. We had great success, around 200 attendees, 39 vendors. Great information, we had Congressman Kelly Armstrong gave a great speech. And we had Director of Highways, Director of Panels would give updates on highway funding. And the most exciting thing about the whole conference, and I did not know that Rich was going to be in the, in the crowd today, but the association decided to give, every year we give out a Friends of NACE, you know, people that really help the organization. And Rich actually this year was the recipient of the Friends of NACE Award. And, you know, Rich was very instrumental, you know, with funding for some of the surge funding. You know, if you look at Highway 10 from Billings County to Morton County, people like him that wouldn't have pushed that through, we wouldn't have, you know, the nice Highway 10 that we have. And I thought it was kind of comical, Rich said the prairie dog funding, he thinks the prairie dog got COVID too, so that's kind of where the buckets didn't all fail, so hats off to that man, he's done a lot for this, for this state and he'll be deeply missed. Some other items, yeah, let's give a round of applause to Rich. Some other items we have, surge funding, we actually ended up picking up some, there was like 111 bridges, 129 applicants, and $25 million for 100 million dollar requests, so we actually picked up 463,000 and Mike will probably talk a little on that. We have a bid opening here at 10 o'clock for a bridge south of Richardson by Duane Sattlers. And that's going to be with county funds. Now that we have that big stockpile of gravel over there, that's going to be our route coming and going, so it's kind of nice to get that bridge out of the way. And Jeremy, he's got a few bridges that are coming up on December, or excuse me, February 11th bid opening, plus the one today. The road crews, we're just busy working, doing maintenance in the shop. And Bob, with Inter, Prose of Interstate Engineering here, give a brief update on the bridge over by South, that bridge by South, it is just across the railroad tracks into the south. In fact, it's in such a bad curve, I got a call from a deputy last night, some kid after school went down that way and that's, that's a sharp curve and icy roads and off into the trees he went, so it's, that bridge is, is need to be replaced, but.
And the underneath is very ugly also, it's not in very good shape. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Prose, do you want to briefly go into, since you're up there, into the lift station? Please?
Thank you, Chairman.
Yes.
I visited with Carla a little bit, and I believe one of the other commissioners. Bellfield has two lift stations that are in very bad condition. The number one lift, that takes all the sewage from the whole town and takes it into the lagoons. That was built in the 70s. It was band-aided in the 90s. Quite honestly, the can cannot be kicked down the road any further. We're currently gathering information for replacement. My engineers have not seen pumps that obsolete ever. From what I'm understanding, this next round of funding, there is funding that is getting funneled to the state, to the counties for water and sewer projects. When this additional funding comes up, request that the county consider helping Bellfield out with a couple of really bad lift stations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob, do you have any projected cost on those two stations? What?
The, the main. Yes, the main lift is approximately 1.4 million dollars to fix it. The, the west lift, that takes all the sewage from the west side of town and then lifts it up and takes it on to the, to the number one lift, that is about $900,000. The west lift is an OSHA nightmare, it's a old-style lift that you have, it has electric motors on top with the pumps down in the bottom, and then there's drive shafts that go down and, and there's catwalks that go down and you have to grease the U joint, it's just, it's a nightmare, it looks like something out of a Frankenstein movie.
So is the city looking and exploring availability of grants or anything like that that can help this project move along?
Yes, they are, they're looking at grants, they're also looking at, at the low-interest loans. They, they have to do something because it's not if it'll fail, it's when it fails. So they're, they're, they're very concerned right now and they're, they're seeking funding wherever they can seek it.
And I'm, I'm sure that part of their plan is to look at special assessments and things like that?
Yes, we've just signed a contract with them to do an infrastructure plan. And in that infrastructure plan, we look at, at the rates, what, what infrastructure needs fixing. I've said it a million times to Bellfield, they've been playing whack-a-mole, you know, problem comes up, whack. So now they, they needed a good plan to identify, this is priority, this, which, which one of these failures are going to hurt us worse? And with that, the funding, looking at the rates, looking at the special assessments, and, and adjusting, adjusting all that to pay for it.
Commissioner.
I just, one quick question, do they have a, a plan in place when this project was started, or does it all hinge on, on the financial part?
The plan is to let bids in May and finish it by July.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Xander, I went to the last meeting in Bellfield and there has been an approval for a low-interest loan. They did approve that at the last meeting for a substantial amount, so they're going to give me the numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that rural development, or who's, who's the financier on that?
I can get you that information. Yes.
Through the Bank of North Dakota, got it, thank you.
Highlands Engineering, Mr. Nice?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mike Ness, Highlands Engineering. I forgot my notes on my desk, so. I guess on top of Rich, I'd like to commend Al too for putting on such a good conference this last week, and his crew that helped him, it's, he put a lot of, a lot of good speakers up in front of us and everything, so good job. But with that, our bridge replacement project southeast of Richardson. We did, I can see it on the screen here, thanks. Yeah, as Al mentioned, we, we applied for and received the ARPA funds, the HB 1505 for this project, so that's good for about 463,000. I'm still waiting to hear back from the DOT on if, when we can get on a bid opening, I'm hoping May-June still, so. Cross our fingers on that one, I guess, so. Other than that, the bipartisan infrastructure bill they talked about this last week and, you know, kind of a summary, it looks like the DOT, there's going to be almost 65% to 70% additional funding through the DOT in the next five years with that bill, so be some extra money, extra bridge money, TA funds, transportation, transportation alternative funding will be coming, I think that budget's supposed to be doubled, I believe Brian stated, so, yeah, so there'll be some, some good funding coming along here, so. Other than that, my other project, Chip Seal, we're looking into, contacted the DOT and we are a little bit in the hole on our SC funds that help fund this type of project, so we're just going to kind of have to work with the DOT on when we can get that project done, hopefully next year. Other than that, that's all I have right now, does anybody have any questions? Oh, that's the photo of the bridge that we're going to be replacing, so. Looks good, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that, is that going to be a historical bridge?
We got the cultural back and it's no effect, so.
Northern Plains, Jeremy Wood?
Good morning, Commissioners. Few updates, construction projects, not a whole lot new to report on that, just going through the final records on our, our two projects that were mostly done in 2021. We should have the final records for the 30th Street Bridge done later this week, actually. And then the other project on 127th and 131st, there's a little bit of cleanup work left in the spring, but not much activity, obviously, in the last month on those two projects. Design projects, like Al mentioned, there's a bid opening here at 10 o'clock for a small bridge, it's just east of Duane Sattlers on 30A Street. Al also mentioned that's county-funded, it doesn't qualify for federal aid based on its length, but that'll be county-funded project. Also have a bid opening set up for February 11th through the DOT for a couple of projects south of Richardson. One of those bridges happens to be just east of Trap Gabharts, the one is south of Air Coons, if you are familiar with that area. Both of those are pretty good size structures, they'll be bid as one project, we had estimated about 1.2 million dollars for, for both of those projects combined. The other projects we're working on are kind of pending funding or environmental review. 127th and 131st were pending funding and, and review on that one, and also there's another one on 131st north of Bellfield, which no issues with that one other than pending funding, so those last three are all eligible for federal aid, so there'll be a cost share on those projects, but it sounds like there's money out there, it just has to be assigned to the county, so that's kind of where we're at with those projects and that's about it, other than obviously a bid opening at 10 today for, for one project.
Okay, thank you.
Questions from Commissioners? Thank you, thanks.
Okay, since we have some abatements that are off the schedule, I'm going to move down a little bit and. Let's see, I'm going to go to the Shelter Care Certification with Sunrise Youth Bureau.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm Holly Prowse, I'm the Director of Sunrise Youth Bureau. I'm basically here because of the changes in House Bill 1035, Children in Need of Services, which was formerly unruly youth, ungovernable youth, will be referred to Human Service Zones in lieu of arrest slash court referral effective August 1st, 2022. Attendant care is no longer applicable, youth will need to be placed in shelter care, short-term placement if needed. DHS Administration rule, shelter care programs will need to be certified by the Department of Human Services. So basically, in order for Sunrise Youth Bureau to continue to take Human Service Zone juveniles, we need to become shelter care certified. In order for us to become shelter care certified, they require the bedroom windows to open. I need to get permission from the Stark County to be able to move forward with this. DHS will be offering grants to assist organizations with startup costs to become shelter care providers. This will be a one-time startup grant to assist with the costs surrounding operations, training, staffing, structural changes, et cetera. We're just as kind of frustrated with these changes because if I was aware that these changes were happening, of course, I would have approached you guys as we were building a new building for us, so, you know, I do apologize, I didn't know these changes were occurring, we're just as frustrated. If we're not able to continue with the process of getting the windows open in the bedrooms, we will not be able to provide housing to the youth we get from the zones or children in need of services, but we will be able to continue with attended care programs and house the youth that have delinquent charges. So this change is, has nothing to do with attended care, this is all shelter care, which affects Department of Human Services, which affects our zones, which used to be called social services. I know there's a lot of changes going on with the restructuring of juvenile justice system as well as social services, human services. So I guess that's why I'm bringing this forward to you guys, I know we are currently in your guys' buildings, so in order for us to be able to continue to house those youth, which we see a lot of youth, we get a lot of youth from the zones, we know we are short on housing services in western North Dakota, we, we have to get certified to be able to continue to see or house those youth. So if we don't do that, that will affect the zones and what they do or where they house their youth. Do you guys have any questions for me? I know this is kind of all confusing because I'm confused as well, so.
Holly, when we had talked, the grant will cover a lot of the cost of the windows, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
So there is an amount I'm able to apply for that should cover the majority or all the costs of the windows that, that we need. When talking to Rich, you know, we do have three bedrooms and I would not change, I would not have opening windows in all three bedrooms, I would probably just do two because one of the bedrooms I could, we use for out-of-school suspension, and then we can specifically house attended care youth in those rooms because they don't require the bedroom windows to open, it would just be the shelter care kids. So I would probably just end up doing two of the bedrooms.
So this is just an egress issue?
Yeah, the window is basically, it's a fire code issue, so, and I contacted Zach, the architect, and he was able to give me all the information of the building and the fire code, I contacted the fire marshal, and I got all this information to the Department of Human Services, that these are all our safety protocols we have. that these are all our safety protocols we have in place. And Dean Stern took this information to the upper people at DHS and they denied it. They said, this is our policy, this is our rules, the bedrooms need to, the, need to have open windows. They need to have two forms of an escape in case of a fire.
And so have you started a bid process or anything?
No, my first step is coming to you guys because it's your building, so I haven't went any further with this.
Chairman?
Yes.
I would, um, like to make a motion that we, uh, authorize the process to go forward with, um, and Holly, you've done a good job, so, um, just to move forward with that. But to keep, uh, our building portfolio, which is who? Commissioner Messer, uh, coordinate all your activity through Commissioner Messer and then, uh, Commissioner Messer can bring it forward to us. But my motion is to approve the process and, um, that's it.
I'll second that. And just under a quick discussion, yeah, you're right, it's unfortunate that we're 12 months or 14 months into a new building and.
I can't believe that they wouldn't require egress windows out of any bedroom because of fire issues. I can't believe that wasn't in place.
They went based on occupancy, so beans we don't house kids 24/7. We were able to do what we did, which is to the highest standard of, I know talking to Rod, he said that we have, the windows are fireproof windows, the doors are fireproof doors, the walls are fireproof, we have the sprinklers. So literally compared to what we had in our old building, which was nothing, this building is way up to standards. And now we have to have the certification to continue to take these kids, so that's where this change is.
Just one other comment. You mentioned that, uh, out of the three windows, two of them would be, um, part of the project to, uh, update it. But if we're gonna do that, because rules change, as, as you well know, building codes change. And so, uh, I, I would like to see, uh, you move forward to replacing all three of them. Because in a year's time or two years' time, it's gonna change and you're gonna start, start the process over.
As long as you have contractors there working on it.
Right.
I don't know if it's, if it's being vastly or majoritely funded by the HA or Health and Human.
My goal is that it doesn't come out of your guys' pocket or my pocket, that they strictly fund this project of getting these windows to be able to open, so we are able to get certified.
How does that work though when you, when you house runaways? I mean, how are you gonna control that?
Tell me about it. I, that was my thing too. I, I feel like we're opening a can of worms with this, but we don't have no options. So, when talking to Dean, he said that other sites have like alarm systems. So if the window is open, alarm will go off, so that way it triggers the staff to know because staff, of course, will be watching these kids 24 hours a day. So either like flashing lights or an alarm system when these windows open. But beans we're ground level with these windows too, I think it's opening a can of worms too of kids running out, you know, getting stuff in, so that worries me too. I'm gonna be honest with you.
Yeah, because there's some liability too if they escape on us and you're, you're responsible for liability there.
Now, instead of just running out the door, they can just open their window and leave their window in the middle of the night. So, but at this point, I don't know if we have any other options unless we go to the higher ups at DHS. But I already talked to Dean and he approached them and they said, no, they, the windows need to open.
That's why I questioned about changing all three windows. Maybe we should keep one because if you have that issue.
So, I mean, I have no idea, but would there be a way that the window would unlock when the alarm went off? Otherwise, it would be locked and they couldn't open it?
They have to have access to be able to open it all the time. I know, I agree. That is worrisome. And my, I guess I should have asked him this too, to be certified, which I'm assuming like Home and the Rage and these other places, unless they have other rules they have to follow, don't tell me those bedroom windows are, are able to open because kids would be constantly, constantly running out of, away from the group homes, you know? So I'm not sure if they have a whole different set of rules or guidelines they have to follow. I'm not, not aware of that.
So, two accesses, so, um, if you had an access point within a certain distance to another part of the building, then you wouldn't have this issue?
No, I have actually highlighted the building and ground rules and I can share that with.
Is that in your packet here?
No, I didn't send you guys any. Oh, it might be.
Nope, nope, don't have that.
But it specifically states that the bedroom windows have to be able to open. I have, um, did you guys get the shelter care program certification? I believe I sent that to Carlos.
I agree with Commissioner Zander that we do all three at once, but then I agree with Commissioner Franchek that we just do two. So when you do have potential runaway, we have the one.
Yeah. I know, I'm kinda torn too. That main first room, like I said, we typically use that for out-of-school suspension or for like carryover. So that one just has a futon in there. So, most likely that's kind of our carryover room where the other two are the main bedrooms. And of course, if we have an attended care kid, which is a delinquent charged child, we, we could put them in a room without the windows opening. So there's two completely separate, different guidelines and rules we'll have to follow for programs. Any other questions? So, if you guys, it sounds like you will approve this. I will apply for the grant. I'm assuming it's your responsibility to take bids and all that. Okay.
Commissioners, uh, Commissioner Messer, I can join you on that because I'm the portfolio holder also.
Sure, that's fine, and we'll get Mike involved, uh, as well.
Any other questions or comments? Like I said, if I would have known about this earlier, of course, I would have approached you guys earlier, but this, these changes just came into an effect, so we need a place for these kiddos to go. We know human services are struggling with placing kids, so.
Holly, I did have some information in my office for you to.
Okay.
For your requests. I just haven't, there was a lot, so I didn't want to scan it over.
Sounds great. Sounds great. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
Thank you, guys.
Madam Chair, Commissioner is Andrew Cordenoy. Sorry, I'm a little hoarse here. I wanted to address Commissioner Marsh's question on that, on having windows open in the event of an alarm. We have done that in the past for different group homes and that does meet fire code requirements as far as the city's concerned. I don't know where this requirement is exactly coming from, but that would be a possibility that, you know, you could explore, is that if the fire system goes off with an alarm for fire, then the egress windows then open. And I would say that yes, that is possible to do and I would encourage to explore that, especially if we have runaway juveniles. So, any questions to me, Commissioners? Madam Chair? Thank you.
We'll get you with Holly too then. Okay, we had a motion on the table by Commissioner Zander, uh, second by Commissioner Messer, I believe. Commissioner Zander?
So what is the motion?
The motion is to approve.
Exploration.
The exploration and two or three of the, the exploration and the bidding process and.
I, I guess, just to approve the process, uh, going forward with, with, uh, with a plan, a master plan involving architect, contractor and, uh, oversight by.
This is, this is at our expense?
No, this will be a grant. This will be through the DHS grant.
Okay.
Ms. Prowse, if there's any more money that, you know, we're gonna be short on, if you could notify us, please. Okay, there's a motion. Commissioner Zander?
That is my motion. Oh, I'm sorry, aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carried. Um, with the. The bid opening is at 10? Okay, um. First on First, county, um, security proposal, Tracy Toos.
Commissioners, uh, I'm Tracy Toos. I'm the second chair for First on First. I don't know how much proposal this is. But, uh, through the course of talking with, uh, Mr. Corey Lee and talking with the city, we'd like to offer that we pay Stark County rather than an outside security source for our security services at First on First. There's requirements that the City of Dickinson has us do and they're, they're different for security services such as, um, licensed security guards. And what we do is we bring them in from Bismarck right now and it costs us about $3,000 to anywhere from $2,100 to $3,000 an event. And since Stark County's there and has helped us out in the past, I don't know why we're paying the people out of Bismarck to come and, and be there anyways. If we could have Corey put on an extra deputy and we pay for that, we're willing to do that if, if it's, if it's, if the commission's willing to do that as well. Uh, I've had very limited conversations with Corey of how it'd work for timeline and scheduling, but this summer we have five events. Um, the first one would start June 30th and this last one's August 4th. So this summer, it's just how the calendars fell that we don't, we're not doing eight events. This year we're only doing five, so. If you guys have any questions?
I do, uh. Being that this is a First on First, it's kind of a, a city project, I, um, and when you talk about security, is, uh, is that not available to off-duty officers to pick up some extra overtime?
I don't know the commission's rules with, with, with your deputies and sheriffs.
I don't, I don't know that we have a rule, but.
We would definitely hire off-duty.
If I had a wedding dance, I'd have to have security.
Correct.
And I, I guess, as I recall, and maybe things have changed, that, um, the first option was always, um, making that available to, uh, off, off-duty police officers and/or reserve deputies or reserve, um, police officers. I each, I know the City of Dickinson has kind of a, a reserve type.
Have you approached the city at all?
I have and they said they don't want their officers, since it is a city event, to do it. And when I mentioned Stark County, they, they didn't care about that. When we first started doing it 14, 15 years ago, through Darcy Folsom's, um, security service that he offered, he had off-duty officers that were actually employees, that they came and they did that. And some were deputies, some were City of Dickinson. And since he doesn't do that anymore in Dickinson, we've had to go out and, some of these guys come from Fargo. And it gets costly and.
The thing I'm concerned about, excuse me, but the thing I'm concerned about is, um, entering into some type of an agreement, uh, with Stark County and First on First is that, then we're assuming a tremendous liability exposure. And, you know, I don't think, and, and I'm guessing that's what, what the Dickinson Police Department's hangup is to. It's a big public event, big crowds from my past experience with it, um, a lot of alcohol. I'm just, I'm just saying, we're, I, I believe that we're going down the wrong road.
Tracy, just a quick question. So typically, how many, um, security personnel are there for 2,100 to 3,000? Is that?
So typically, Commissioner Messer, typically, uh, it's about four security officers that are there. And, uh, I mean, their average age is probably late 60s. It's, it's not a good thing. So we're looking for alternatives. I think we had a better showing when, when they allowed us to use the DSU athletic program. And we had eight, 10 massive guys there. We've never really had a big issue. Bernie can probably attest to this more than me. The issue comes after the event is over. Uh, it comes probably from 10 to midnight and, and it comes when we're tearing down and, and, yeah, alcohol is involved 100% of the time.
So would you want them there after the event also?
They typically are. Right now, I'm gonna tell you that since Corey has been involved the last couple of years, he's always had officers there, he's always had deputies there, but if there's an emergency, you know, they have to leave. And, and their presence is more at the end of the event when we've seen them. And, and the City of Dickinson has also had, you know, the PD's been there too, so. But, uh, they still require us to have people designated there for security, so. And we've been fortunate. We've, we've absolutely been really, really fortunate. I've been involved for about nine years now. This is going on the 10th year. And, and literally we've had one, one event that we would classify as a bad deal, so.
Chair?
Yes, Sheriff Lee.
Um, just to clarify, the police department does not allow their off-duty officers to, to work details like this and they no longer have a reserve program, so that kind of puts, uh, Mr. Toos in a bind here a little bit too, as far as that goes, just so you guys have all the information.
So do you have enough staff that you would be able to do this?
Well, we'd have to see. So how this works is the police department defines what these guys have to have for security or, you know, basically it comes with their permit to do the event. So, uh, Captain Ciani up at the police department will define what he thinks they need to do. So, but once we saw that, then we would say if we could or couldn't do the event and how much we would need to, to cover it, basically. I guess what I would like to see or what I have in mind, and I'm kind of basing this off the state fair up in Minot where the sheriff's department does that for them. You look at Jamestown, Fargo, Grand Forks, Minot, Williston, uh, all those departments basically let their deputies do this stuff off-duty. Uh, we don't do that here yet. We haven't gotten into that, uh, so much. But, uh, for this, I think this would be a good trial period for that. I, I guess what I was thinking and visiting about this a little bit yesterday is we could, uh, offer our guys, uh, double time, basically. If that's.
So they would pay the double time?
They would. So that would, I think that would attract our deputies to do this. It's a nice little incentive for them.
And you could have, you could have four people off-duty all the time for that?
Well, four people might be a stretch.
Well, that's what they have.
Three, three, I think we could do. But maybe, I think three of our deputies are equivalent to what they have off their.
I wanna know what we're gonna say, yes or no to.
Right, Bernie. Um, Commissioner Marsh, uh, I think what Corey's alluding to is we don't know until the permits are in and we have to sit down with, with Joe and Rita and figure that out. It's been anywhere from two to four that we need there. I really don't know how they base it, but it changes every year. And, uh, I think it, I think it is more based on the level of service we're getting provided from that security personnel. So I know that one year when the PD did cover it, it was two people. So, I don't know if that would change. If there's officers or off-duty police officers there, I don't know if that would change in Joe or Rita's terms. It's not gonna change the level of security the Rock needs or you, or the Esquire needs down the street or, or any of that. It's gonna change what is in that active area on the streets.
So if the current, uh, police department policy is not to allow their, uh, officers to go off-duty independently, our current policy is not to allow officers to go off-duty independently, then.
That is not our policy.
Or that's, or that's your practice, then or whatever. I'm just saying, I, I, I think this, there has to be an additional conversation with the police department as, as well, if, if that could be part of the formula. I mean, I want these events to succeed. They're great. They're great for our community and, uh, but I. And, but I just, I'm just wondering if you put two or three officers off-duty at there and they stick around till 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, what, you know, are they going to get enough rest time to get their next schedule, or you'll handle the schedule that way, or whatever? I just, just thoughts coming through my mind.
Well, there's a, you know, the OSHA deal is, you have to have eight hours off before you can go back to work. And typically, the way our schedule sits is these guys aren't going to be working that Friday morning if they're working the event Thursday night, so.
And I just want to, from the legal point of view, go back to what Commissioner Zander said. I think there needs to be a conversation with Endor before any decision is made because that, that might be something that they would have some thoughts on, so.
Yeah, I was going to ask for your opinion, so thank you.
So do we want to do some further investigation and table this until the next meeting and do some? Ms. Inglesstedt, would you get ahold of Endor before the next meeting?
I'd appreciate that. We have time.
Okay.
And I can visit with some other departments around the state. Like I said, the sheriff's departments in all the major cities are doing this stuff, so I don't know that there'd be a legal issue, but I can certainly do check. Sure.
What are the hours of your events?
So we really start at about 1:00 in the afternoon setting up. I would have to say the first level of service of alcohol or something is about 5:00 PM, and, and we shut down at 11:00. And our permit goes till 2, but we just shut down at 11:00 just to kind of clear it out and get everything cleared out before the other bar time close.
And I'm just wondering why the, the establishments that are selling the liquor, because quite honestly, it's the alcohol that's primarily the cause of your, any disturbances, right?
Right.
So do those establishments that are serving alcohol, do they, are they required to provide their own security on their premises?
Commissioner Zander, yes. The Rock has certain level of security, and that's determined on their own. As they extend the boundaries of their service to like the curb line and where their fence is, they have to provide so many people to wristband and do security and, and validate IDs. Since their permit is the permit that we use downtown, that is also extended to the VIP area at the Odd Fellows. But we also have to have security on the streets, which is First Avenue and First Street, to the level that the City of Dickinson permit lists. And I said that's moving target.
So the Rock's responsible for their place and the VIP.
Correct.
But not for the rest of it.
Correct, and we, and we.
That's their license premise.
Correct, Mr. Marsh. Commissioner Marsh, you, you're kind of familiar with it a little bit because we have to work with the other bars too. And then when something happens, it's kind of like first come, first served with the security of who gets there first and.
Parts of something happens, if there's an event, we just go 911 and.
Commissioner Zander, that's kind of the whole point of this. Our, our, our security guys, they've gotten a little older. They've, I don't know if they could do, do much at this point other than dial 911 and wait for it to happen. So that was kind of one of the conversations with some Stark County deputies that it led to, that they are the ones that have to come in and, and make the choice of enforcing of what happened anyways. It's either going to be the PD or the Stark County Sheriff's Department, whoever responds to that call. And that's kind of where our discussion started last year.
I'm just really nervous about entering into any kind of an agreement on this. We have 911 for a reason. Stark County has an ever-growing footprint in the City of Dickinson anyhow, as, as documented in the sheriff's report today. I, I'm in favor of tabling this if, if that's the direction we're headed, but I'm just voicing my concern on the, the liability things, the things we say, the things that we do, you know.
I would, I'm sorry, Commissioner Zander, we have a bid opening at 10. I don't mean to cut you off.
Sorry, no.
But thank you for coming, Tracy. We will, I'd ask for a motion to table this till the next meeting until Sheriff Lee and Ms. Inglesstedt get the information that they're going to bring forth.
Do we need a motion on that?
I'd ask for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I would second it, and I would encourage one of the commissioners to join that conversation with, maybe Dean, because he has the law enforcement background.
Mr. Franchek, would you?
That's fine.
Okay.
I think that all commissioners can have some input on this thing, but I agree that Commissioner Franchek would be the good go-to person on this. And, but, you know, I think that each commissioner should have an opportunity to, you know, discuss it with Mr. Franchek as, as things move forward.
I will make sure it gets on the next month's agenda. Okay, there was a motion and a second. Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carried to be tabled till next month. Do we have to wait right till 10:00 with the bid opening? It was legally, do we have to wait right till 10:00?
I'll wait, yeah.
The man here, I'm going to go get a cup of coffee.
If that's appropriate, then you take a look at them, and if they're good, then they're size, and go to. Well, they'll take, they'll, Highland will take them, or whoever's on this, they'll take them to the back and look at who the lowest bid is.
The engineering producer provides that. I think he has something to say on there, he probably has.
10 o'clock.
Mr. Wood, it is 10 o'clock. Do you have our bid sheets? Excuse me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You get it anyway.
So it has the, everything on it?
If it looks good, then you can open them. They have, you have to open this first, to make sure they've got the correct license on there.
We are opening the bid for Edward Schwartz Construction. The total bid for Edward Schwartz Construction is $179,999.04. Again, 179, 999,04. Everything has been approved and Martin Construction's bid, or all licensing approved. Marshall, Martin Construction bid is $198,044.96. Again, 198, 044, 96. The bid for Beck Consulting is $274,311. Again, Beck Consulting, $274,311. The bid for Halibachek Construction is $191,650.58. The bid for Wilson Construction, Inc. is $152,68.25. Again, $152,086, or $68, excuse me, dollars and 25 cents.
Yeah, so what we'll do is we'll tabulate the bids, see if there's any math errors, and come back with a recommendation to award.
So where's Wilson from?
I'd like, I'd like to thank all the bidders for their turning the bid in today. It's like we got some pretty good numbers. And Mr. Messer, a question, you know, this, this is county-funded, but I'm not sure if you're aware of, we also did receive just about 2.5 million with ARPA funding, and we have to keep separate track. We can use that for roads, bridges, gravel, things like that. We can't buy any equipment, so we can actually fund this out of here. And the project that Highland brought up this morning, that 460-some thousand, that's 100%, so hopefully that bid will come in around that, because anything over that, we'll have to cover, so. Thank you.
Ms. Heizer, are you ready for park board? No, okay. And that is at what? 10:30, okay. We could do the, the ETZ airport. Okay, then we'll, we can skip down to the new ETZ update on the airport.
I guess you got some maps in front of you, the ETZ on that for the city, this hole's on there, you see the, Julie, there's kind of a. hole's on there, you see the, Julie, there's kind of a pinkish line, that's four-mile radius on there, but the city is going with, it's kind of a green line, they're kind of a dashed green line, that's what they're going with there. If you look to the south part of that map there, the airport is actually, the property exceeds the four-mile radius, so the city's asking for approval for them to take into the full airport property. So I'd make a motion that we send a letter to the City of Dickinson authorizing then to take the ETZ, then to take into the full airport properties. Is shown on the map, where the area they're talking about.
I would second that.
Okay. Did they change anything around Patterson Lake then? Because they were concerned about something out there.
Well-
The green line is what it was.
The green line is- Yeah, it's in there now. So the yellow is the previous, Bernie.
Okay, the orange, yellow, or whatever it is, yeah.
Yep, and then, this is the recommendation that's going to go in front of the City of Dickinson's P&amp;Z, and they still have the ability to change and amend it, and then it'll go to full.
And so you worked on this with who?
So our subcommittee, so it was Commissioner Franchak, myself, two city commissioners, Commissioner Jason Frederick, Commissioner Oderman-
Airport-
Airport Authority. Park District was involved in it. And so if, and just as a comment, the authorization or the ability under the statute, now that the city's population exceeded 25,000, is the pink line, which would encompass about 93 square miles. The recommendation that's coming out of that committee reduced that to about 26 or 27 square miles. So it's been significantly reduced, primarily they're protecting the corridors, north, south, east, west, and then they wanted this included, so.
The city will be setting up public hearings on this also.
So we went extended beyond the four miles?
For the airport, to take in the airport area, south, the south part of the airport.
Well, if that's your recommendation, I guess I'll make a motion we approve it.
We have that on the table already.
That's right. Now we were in discussion, I apologize.
No problem.
I'm sorry, I guess I-
Was there a second to that?
Was there a second to the motion?
He made a motion, I seconded it.
Speak up.
He said it, that's why I didn't talk until after he seconded it.
Is there any more discussion?
Does the, a quick question, does the, on ETZ, I didn't, I wasn't aware that we had to give an up or down vote on that.
No, but we, it's, but it's outside of the ETZ, the allowable ETZ, and so therefore we have to, it's a technical-
You're just talking about, just the airport?
Just that small line on the bottom of the map-
Right.
-extends beyond the pink circle, looks like, you know-
Just that little corner.
Yep, there's a couple of, you know, it's a couple of miles wide, less than a half mile deep.
All right.
It would make no sense to, you know, split the airport and then through the middle and-
No, no.
I agree, I guess I would approve it, providing that they don't extend anything else, just leave the map as it's presented.
Well, there will be, like Dean said, there's going to be public hearings at both P&amp;Z and the City of Dickinson, so.
It would have been nice to have a map with a little bit of, a map with a little bit of addresses on it, but-
Well, I, we certainly could ask, answer any of those questions if you want at this point, if that would help you. So if you go to the west side, 116 is the north-south primary, and then once they get within a half mile of, of interstate, you'll see that they kind of could grab the interstate corridor east to west.
So how far are they going west? What is that on here?
It's a, it's a half, half mile, or excuse me, one mile past the west exit. Roers has a bunch of property over there already, and if that was ever developed, they're trying to include that.
Okay.
So, that'd be like one, one eighteen?
116th is the, is the exit, so it goes west to that a little bit.
Oh yeah, that's right, 116 is, okay.
And north?
So it kind of jogs the, if you go north on 22, it does not include County Line Truck Stop, it, it is just south of there, and then it goes east and west, a mile on each side of that, and it drops down to 32nd, or excuse, I think it's 32nd, over to 112, and then it jogs over to 116, that big kind of north-south line.
So this on the, so I understand that we're looking at the green line, you said, or the orange, or the pink?
The green dash is the recommendation-
Green line.
Okay.
That's going to the P&amp;Z.
So all of Patterson is in that, on that side?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. There's been a motion and a, motion made in it.
I have one more question.
I'm sorry.
So are they including the refinery or not including the refinery?
Under the current proposal, the refinery and all its land, even to the east side of 116, is excluded from the ETZ.
And what is the chance there is any plans on this being changed, ever? Will this be brought for the county if there's major changes?
Well, again, we don't have, we don't have the ability to say-
I understand that, just for knowledge.
But it, the plan is, they've proposed it, it was go in front of P&amp;Z for at least one public hearing, and then the P&amp;Z will make a recommendation or change- and then take that recommendation to the full City of Commission.
Is there any more discussion?
That'll have a vote, Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchak?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
That letter, Amanda, will you actually do that, or does the chair have to sign that, for the letter, for the letter to the City of authorizing this? Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Wandler, are you on the line? Natalie?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I, I don't know if, I can't see, the YouTube's not working, so I don't know if you can see the, the slide that I sent to Nicole. Basically, I am asking for out-of-state travel to go to Deadwood, June 26 through the 30th, for the NCR 880 Conference, which is the North Central Regional Assessing, Association of Assessing Officers. These conferences are all over between Illinois, Indiana, Iowa, Kansas, Michigan, Minnesota. It was supposed to be in Deadwood a couple of years ago, with COVID, it got canceled, so they brought it back this year. So, basically, I'm just requesting out-of-state travel to go to that conference in June.
What is the amount of the conference, Natalie?
What's that?
What is the amount of the conference?
The conference is $325, I believe, for the conference, and then the rooms run 119 apiece, per night. Yeah, 119 per night, and then the conference itself is $325. And I did budget extra for this event last year, I just know that we need to come and request out-of-state travel if it's an out-of-state event.
So it is in the budget, right?
Yes.
I offered the motion to approve the out-of-state travel as requested by the tax office. Natalie Wandler.
There's a motion on the table?
I'll second that.
Any more discussion?
What happens in Deadwood stays in Deadwood.
Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchak?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Natalie.
Thank you, Commissioners.
We did the LEPC. Nikita, let's do the LEPC membership, please.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Sorry, my first time up here, so I'm a little nervous. So, on, the LEPC approved the new, on 111 of this year, approved the new committee member list, and there's just a few changes, Missouri Basin was removed, and then the regional coordinator was added to NDDES, so those were the two changes. I just need a motion to approve the member list for 2022.
Okay.
Do we have copy of the list?
We have email on it.
Yeah.
Is that that email? That was, it's in the packet.
Also, you have, in your packets, you also have a, a list.
Oh, I see it, okay.
Any questions or discussion on the list?
So the motion to approve the-
The 2022.
List is in order, I'll make that motion.
Motion to approve the list for the LEPC 2022 membership?
A second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Motion carried.
Perfect, and then, while I'm up here, I wanted to just mention, our department did receive, is receiving a grant, it's a Hazardous Materials Emergency Preparedness Grant, and it's going to fund a tabletop exercise and a full-scale exercise for, for a county, a countywide exercise related to hazardous materials incident. It's gonna, we're gonna simulate a derailment, so, and the grant was just under $10,000, so, just wanted to let you guys know about that.
Thank you for applying for that.
Who's all going to take part in that exercise?
Any county, any responding agencies, countywide, so.
Sheriff's Department, the Police Department, the ambulance, the fires?
Yep, yep, and that will happen later on in the year, the planning will begin February 8th, so. Yep. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. I can, would bring up the, the county delegate, in our, in our minutes, we had tabled it, so I had brought it back, about the North Dakota State Fair Delegate, currently has Kurt Freilich as the county delegate with his term, and it says, Arthod will check it with Kurt to see if he's interested in being a delegate this year. I talked to Mr. Freilich, and he does, he is already a delegate, and he gets Holly on board, and what this is about is to have a commissioner as a delegate for the year, for the fair.
Do you want to do that?
We already did that, we pointed, we were planning Bernie for that, part of the colony of one, he does it for the state, for this extension service. I've been going the last few years, and I said since he's on the fair board, that he should go this time for being a delegate.
He was assigned it on our portfolio.
Okay, I did not realize that.
So it's just Kurt that we were waiting to see if he was going to continue to do his, or if it was Holly that was taking his place.
Okay, so Kurt is going to, he nominates himself, and then he nominates Holly.
Okay, so.
So this is all taken care of then?
Then it should be-
And Bernie, then you are the state delegate?
Yep.
Okay.
Do we have to make that official, Dean? Because I don't remember-
They usually, they usually send a letter right before that, when they're having their meetings and that, to make sure we have a delegate, but we have already approved it, so-
Okay.
We just, when they send it, we just, you notify that you'll be sending somebody.
Okay. I could bring up the portfolio on that, the reason I brought that up is because Commissioner Zander offered to, I just wanted to make it official, Commissioner Zander offered to take the airport. That was on my portfolio, so Commissioner Zander will now have the Airport Authority portfolio. Thank you, Commissioner Zander.
You're welcome, thank you.
One down, ten to go. We will wait three minutes for the park board meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, Jeremy, you can come forward with the bid.
Tabulation of bids, in the as-read bid of Wilson Construction, of $152,068.25, was verified, so we would recommend awarding to Wilson Construction in that amount.
Motion by Commissioner Zander?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Franchak, any more discussion? With that, I'll do roll call, Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchak?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Wood. That's canceled, yes.
Question, so since that monitor's not working, does that mean that the recording's not working or what? Okay. Okay, thank you. Yeah, it hasn't been on for a while, so I thought maybe that had something to do with it. Thank you.
The city abatement hearing last night ended, it went offline too, towards the end of the meeting, so I don't know if that's part of it or whatever, so. Got it.
Okay, I'll recess, recess the county commission meeting to open up the park board meeting. Ms. Heiser?
All right, I'm going to call the meeting to order, the February 1st, 2022 park board meeting. Lisa Heiser as the recording secretary, I'm going to ask for, if there's any objection to appointing Dean Franchak as the chairman pro tempore for this meeting, since our president is on the phone, and our vice president is as well going to be on the phone. Is there any objections to that?
No objection.
Hearing no objections, then Dean, you will be the chairman for this meeting, if you want to take that over.
Okay.
Okay. So, we have the agendas, are any changes or additions to the agenda? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Then we have the minutes for the last meeting, which was January 4, 2022. Is there any corrections to that? For minutes?
Make motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes for January 4th? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Next, we'll do the director's report.
I don't have a report for you today.
No report?
No.
Okay. Next, we go into old business, then. There is none. And then, move into new business, then we have the procedure for lightning safe work procedure. That should be in your packet.
Yep. That's in your guys' packets. Lisa Heiser, County Parks Director. And I have Randy on the phone here, so I've got my cellphone up to the, to the mic, so Randy, just go ahead and speak whenever you need to. But the, the emergency management has put this in place, and Nikita has worked very hard at that, so thank you, Nikita. And she'll be up here to talk about these response plans, the lightning safe work procedure. Nikita, if you want to come up and just talk about that?
Yeah, so, so this emergency response plan is specific to the fairgrounds. It's, it acts as a guide, a tool to prepare for an emergency, such as, you know, a lost child, or a fire, if there's a tornado, what to do, and then we have a lightning procedure too, like what to do in the event of a lightning incident. So, yeah, that's, it's pretty much just a tool to, to help prepare for any incidents at the fairgrounds, and, yeah.
Okay.
Do we need motions to approve both these plans, then, or?
I would like them, yes.
Make a motion to approve the lightning safe work procedure?
Okay, you have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
You have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. And I'll look for a motion to approve the emergency response plan for the fairgrounds and events park.
And that's the same, same type of deal, just to be able to, and this will also be, so that you guys know, at first, we're doing it for the fairgrounds, but this same plan, if approved, will be also implemented at the Speedway and Motocross. This is the same thing, just kind of telling people if they are renters of the facility, or if we are out there, our fair board is out there, just kind of allowing them some information on what to do, should there be an emergency of some sort. And so, this walks you through all of those different scenarios that would be requiring some sort of guidance to the people that are attending the facility, or visitors, or spectators.
So, do you keep a copy of this at the facilities?
Yes, we'll keep a copy of it at the facility. We'll have one, obviously, in every place that everybody will be, but then it will also be emailed to each of the individuals that would be renting the facility, and getting their acknowledgement that they have read it.
Chairman Franchek?
Yes.
So who put this together? I mean, did Nikita help you with this too?
Nikita.
Okay.
She did it all. I just went through it and did some revisions and that, but yeah, we've been working on this for quite a few years to get these through, and make sure that we have some sort of a plan.
Great. I'll make a motion to approve the emergency response plan for the Stark County Fairgrounds.
And Events Park.
And Events Park.
Okay, you'll do a second.
I'll second it.
Have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Nikita, thank you for all your work.
Yes, thank you. She actually had it done in July, but I was busy. So, thank you.
Okay. Next, you have the master plan revision.
Yes, so you have in front of you the plan from HTG. And what this is, when we were going through the changes to the master plan, some of the things that we wanted to do in order to make the facility better and more usable, which one of them was moving the north arena, that practice arena, closer to the main arena, so that we could potentially use both for different events, and also replacing where the barn was on the master plan, which I'll have a drawing for you guys soon on that. But just putting that barn where that arena is made more sense in terms of the electrical that's already there, and then sharing the parking in the middle piece, where we call overflow parking, made more sense to share that parking with all three pieces, with the barn, the main arena, and the future indoor arena. So, that's the changes that we're doing there. And then, also adding the restrooms that we were approved to do this year to that master plan as well. We did talk about doing the, there's, there's an issue when you first walk in of the ADA compliance, and we make all the ADA people walk all the way around by, in front of the concessions building, and all the way around, and it's not very user-friendly. People with babies and strollers don't ever go that way either, they're up and down the grass, and we've seen, actually, some of the ADA people that are not wheelchair compliant, but they are trying to take that grass area. So, we decided that within this budgeting piece, we could potentially put in a ramp, kind of a switchback type of a ramp in there, so that it would make it better for those that aren't in a wheelchair and just have walking issues, because that's a long ways for them to walk. And so, to add that in there, and then also the park, I had gotten a grant for placing of the park, but we also wanted to put that on the master plan. So, what this is, is the $14,000, it's a lump sum fee, plus their expenses, should they have any expenses. We, we believe those will be relatively low, if any, because we believe it's all lumped into this $14,000. But what they will do is, all of this up here, just trying to do, they do a mini feasibility study, just to make sure that, yes, the restrooms are the right thing to do, which we all know they are, but they have to do a technical piece to that, and then update the master plan, so that we get that updated drawing, and we can start doing our public input meetings, because we haven't been able to do those yet. And then, we realized we did not have an agreement in place for the drawings of the restrooms, and we needed to do that before we bid those. So, that's what this is, if you would choose to approve this.
Any questions?
So, there's no plans yet for the restrooms, or this is just changing the?
Correct. Yep, you will see the plans for the restrooms before anything goes to bid.
I'll make a motion that we approve everything you just said.
Okay, you have a motion to approve the master plan revision? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second. Any other discussions?
Just real quick question, so, at the current point, you handed these out several months ago, the A1 through A5?
Yes.
And, so are you, you're still pursuing any one of those options? You have not narrowed it down? Is that my understanding here? And what does this $14,000?
Sort of, yes.
It says, "Update the master plan."
Yes, that's the drawing of the master plan, to provide that to all of us. That's what that is. And then, also to do the, move forward with the plans on, drawing the plans on the restrooms.
And that's included in the $14,000?
In that, yes, correct.
Is there still any consideration of putting the restrooms underneath the bleachers?
They cannot do the restrooms underneath the bleachers, because of the way the structure is on the bleachers. They said, "If we did that, we'd have to uplift the, the actual bleachers, and all of the foundation underneath would have to be redone." And the, the expense was too much to do that, so where we're proposing that they're going to go is just on that grassy area, right to the west of the grandstands, and then just over, there will be a little part for a park, and a little portion on the other side.
That's too bad, because that's a lot of wasted space.
It is. It very much is. After we've seen the Baker one, and how they did theirs was really nice to have, but yeah, too much expense involved in there. We were talking upwards of $500,000 for, to add the restrooms onto that.
Any other discussion? Not have a motion to approve the master plan revision, then, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. And finally, we have the funding recommendation request.
So, this one here, I'm just requesting that this board make a recommendation to the Stark County Commission to start some funding, so that we have a plan to move forward with a facility out there. And what I'm proposing that we do is to allocate some dollars, we were talking, I was talking with the architect, about just doing a shell of the building, of, this is the indoor arena piece, and then phasing in, instead of phasing the buildings, phase in the portions within the building, so to do the entire shell, and then phase in the offices, the event space, meeting space, the park, those type of things, but get that arena up. So what we're under right now, I have that facility booked, the indoor facility booked for 14 weekends out of the year, as soon as it's built, and the, my concern is, and the thing that I'm hearing from those people that are booking, and these are big bookings, these aren't just small jackpot events, is that they sign multi-contract, multi-year contracts with their facilities that they're currently at. And so, what's happening is, they're reaching the end of their contracts right now, and they're wondering, should we book for another, they typically are three-to-five-year contracts, which will eliminate my use of this facility, should we not move forward. The other side to this is the funders. So, the ones that we were seeking funding from are having a bit of an issue, because we have no plan to move forward, and they don't want us just taking their dollars and throwing them in our savings account. They're all still willing to give money, however, their concern is that we are just sitting here and not doing anything, and there's no plan to do anything. And that's my request to you, is to make that, at least something started, so that we can start designing and doing some of those things, and get some funding forward, so that I can start reaching my goal. And my goal, as Mr. Marsh knows very well, is to raise $2.9 million towards this. We're $500,000 into it without even trying so far, and I've got several people and companies that want to give money, and so I, I need to move forward on it as, as quickly as we can, with being also, you know, knowing that we need to watch funds. We have $1 million still left in CDs, and those ones I'm requesting be moved, so that we can start utilizing that. Also, the people that leveled the hill, all the contractors, everybody that donated their time, it came to $1.3 million. And I know when, at the time, Chairman Kuntz was on the board, he said, "If we got this donated, that would be money that they would allocate to me, because it didn't cost the county." And these guys are now coming forward, asking the question of, "Why is it now, two years later, and you haven't even started anything?" And so, you know, that feeling, we do not want them to feel like their, their monies and their time and everything that was wasted, because obviously, that was right before COVID hit the first time, and shut everything down, so a lot of these companies had losses for that year. And so, we just want to be cognizant that we're doing the right things with the monies that they allocated on our behalf to build this building. So, any questions or?
And there is some pretty, excuse me?
No, go ahead.
There are some pretty big donors that are looking at putting their money elsewhere, if we don't at least make a motion and move on with something.
Correct.
So, what does the 2.9 get you?
Well, on the original piece to that, the 2.9 was going to be the office building, the events piece, and a commercial kitchen. That was the first piece of it. What we're proposing, and I can bring back more of a, a final dollar amount to do the whole building, because if we do that whole building, you have one mobilization, one dirt work, you don't have to keep bringing this back in, because those are added costs to us, if we have that. So that's a consideration, and that's something we hadn't thought about before, and the architect at HTG had brought that up, that that may be a better plan for what we need to do to salvage not only the scheduling piece to this, because it is, it is pretty significant to schedule for 14 weekends, and we don't have any plan yet to build.
So if I'm looking at any one of these plans, I don't, could you reference the office building for me? Is that the office?
Yep, that would have been phase, it would have been phase three, I believe. I believe the restrooms were phase two. The leveling of the hill was phase one. So then, phase three was the, just the very front part, there's a couple offices in there. There is an event facility for meetings, those types of things, should we need it. And then, that would have, I guess, depending on the design, it would have the ability to add on the rest of it.
So, conceptually, about how many square feet in that office, fairgrounds, event hall, do you know?
I don't know off the top of my head, no. It was, it was basically, there was, there was three offices that were in there. One was going to be used for the people, like Rough Rider Commission, and some of them that would need specific facilities, there would be an office for me in there, and then potentially growth for staff in the next 20, 30 years, whatever it would be if we needed it.
Chairman Franchek? And also, like, phase one is completely paid and done?
Yes, that's the, that's the part that they donated their, their 1.3 million.
And phase two is?
The restrooms.
The restrooms.
Yep, which we're doing this year.
Yep. So we just need to start approving these phases, and approve to go into phase three and start the funding, so you can get the funding.
So we can start that, that piece to it?
Start the campaign for that.
We need to, obviously, get our piece in there as well, but yes, you're correct.
So, your thought process, and apologize.
That's okay.
The million that you have is part of the 2.9 million, then?
No. No. I will raise the 2.9 million outside of anything that the county does. The 1 million is sitting in CDs, that's earmarked, was the, the park boards when they came in, I guess in 2016, 2017, when they got put into the general fund, and so that's just been sitting out there. And so, we'd like to utilize that to start the designs and some of those things, and as we move forward with plans, that's, that will make my fundraising much more visible, I guess, to be able to see what we're doing in the future, and that we have plans to move
So you're looking for authorization to move forward to plan the event?
The, the building, I'd like to do the whole shell of the building, just like he had said. Now, obviously, that's not in front of you with anything, but I'd like authorization to move forward with that plan.
With the plan?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to authorize to move forward with that plan.
Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. Was that Randy that seconded, or?
You can take Randy's.
Randy, yep.
Okay. Motion is second. All, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Is there anything else?
Nope, that's it.
I'll look for a motion to adjourn, then.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
And with that, before we go into our county commission session, again, we will have a recess of 10 minutes.
Requests that were heard, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval for both of them. The first one was, was Brooks Hondal, he was requesting a rezoning from agriculture to agricultural residential. The property is located, has an address of 1158842nd Street Southwest. It's approximately 15 acres. Planning and zoning, as well as staff recommended, recommended approval, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? With that, I would ask for a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the RZ 01-22 for Brooks Hondal, for the rezoning from agriculture to agricultural residential.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? With that, we'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Xander?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Well, thank you. The second item was a request from Jesse and Karen Pavlicek. They wanted to re, to rezone a, a 12.06, approximately 12.06 acre piece. It's located on 117th, just south of the, about a mile or so south of the county line. It's in the northeast section of Section 4. 4, Township 140, north in range 97 west. They intend, they intend to, to build a single family residence on it, both Planning and Zoning Commission and the, and the, and staff recommended approval. And I'm here to answer any questions. Yes, it's commissioners, it's that little piece in the, in the, the right hand, the right hand corner. Our GIS was down at the time, so that was, you know, this was just something that the applicant turned in to show, show that, to show what, what piece they were looking at, rezoning that they intend.
What's that little block, black square at the bottom right?
That's the piece of property they're intending to rezone. That's the piece of property that they wish to rezone.
Oh, oh.
I thought it was that whole blue.
Yeah, they've, no, they've already, they've already submitted a, a survey. They just, you know, they've, the, the deal is done. They just need to get the rezoning to get a building permit.
Are there any other questions? That I'll ask for a motion.
Make a motion to approve RZ 02-22 for Jesse and Karen Pavlicek for requesting a rezoning from agriculture, agricultural residential.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote of Commissioner Franck?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carried.
Thank you very much. I'll go notify, I'm going to notify the applicants right now that the board approved these.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got neighbors coming.
2022 holiday schedule. Joanna Piercy, please.
We already have this. Yeah, thank you.
Good morning. Joanna Piercy, Human Resources Director. As we were creating our 2022 holiday schedule for payroll, we had a couple points that we wanted to discuss with you. Last year, Juneteenth was made a federal holiday, and the state didn't really have time to act upon it. So they did put it in though as something they observe, but it's not a legal holiday for the state of North Dakota. So we wanted to have discussion on, I kind of gave a couple options there. You could look at adding Juneteenth as a list of paid holidays. It actually happens to fall on a Sunday this year, so it would be observed on Monday. And we take, typically get eight hours of holiday pay for paid holidays, and the courthouse would be closed. The other option is that we would have no office closure or paid holiday until the state of North Dakota adds it as a public holiday. And some HR representatives has visited with them, and they thought that that wouldn't happen until 2023.
Any discussion?
I think we should follow the state's lead on that.
I agree.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion by Commissioner Marsh that we wait until the state of North Dakota adds this as a public holiday, is seconded by Commissioner Zander. Any more discussion? Going to vote. Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Franck?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carried.
All right, thank you. The second thing that I wanted to discuss was Christmas Eve. As you remember, this year it was brought forward on whether we should observe Christmas Eve on the Thursday. And we did end up doing it. This year, Christmas Eve falls on a Saturday, so I didn't want us to have to, you know, come forward again about that time, and our holiday schedule wasn't set up that way. So we wanted to get ahead of the game and discuss it now. So we could do a couple different options here. We could observe it on Friday, December 23rd, and pay four hours of holiday pay, because typically office closure is, is for four hours, or we close at noon on, on Christmas Eve. The courthouse would be closed. Option two, since December 24th does fall on a weekend, you know, there, there would be no office closure or holiday pay. So those are the two options. But we would get back to the whole eight hours of paid holiday versus 12, which we had discussed this year, too.
If, excuse me.
Yes.
If it's Friday, December 23rd, at which, if we continue with what we're doing, we're closed at noon on Fridays regardless, correct?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, correct.
And so what you're, not that you're asking it, but what you're pointing out is that Friday would be closed 100% along with four hours of holiday pay.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So do they also get the eight hours of holiday pay though for Saturday, too?
No, Christmas is on Sunday, so it will be observed on Monday. So they got eight hours of holiday pay on Monday.
Well, I make a motion we go with option two.
And I would second that as well. So.
Okay. There's been a motion and a second on option two, December 24th, falls on a weekend, therefore no office closure or holiday pay. And that means extra holiday pay, correct?
Right.
Would, but would be the extra because they are getting holiday pay?
Correct.
Okay, for the employees, okay?
I, I'd be happy to listen to some more discussion on that.
I'm sorry. Okay, I'll do, sorry.
You know, I'm just saying.
I'll do roll call, I'll do vote first. Sorry about that. Okay, we'll do a roll call, or we'll just do roll call vote on that also. Commissioner Zander?
If he wants more discussion, now's the time to discuss it.
I'm just asking if there is.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're gonna do that.
Any other thoughts by other commissioners? I seconded it to get to discussion.
I'm sorry, yep.
Yeah, but, okay, thank you.
Well, let's see, I'm for option one.
I just see it's a fine line when we give out extra because this is taxpayer dollars, and everybody else gets the same thing. And I just feel like I don't know if we have the authority to give more hours out.
Under normal circumstances, the staff do receive four hours of holiday pay for Christmas Eve. That is typical unless it falls on a weekend. So any other year, they would get four hours of holiday pay for Christmas Eve, plus eight hours of holiday pay for Christmas Day. It's just because it falls on a weekend, so they will lose that four hours if that clarifies it.
So to understand that, right, they get a total of 12 hours?
Mm-hmm, between Christmas and Christmas Eve.
Even if it isn't on a weekend, or whenever?
When it isn't on a weekend, yes.
So if we're following the state precedent on the first conversation, the Juneteenth, what is the state's policy on?
It's county offices will close at noon on December 24th unless it is a holiday or weekend pursuant to NDCC 10302.
So explain NDCC, da-da-da-da-da.
So that, that's their holiday schedule. And, I mean, they, they consider a holiday as an eight-hour day. So when they close at noon, then you get paid four hours of holiday pay.
But otherwise, they don't, they don't recognize, if it falls on a weekend, they don't recognize it as taking that time off?
That's how I read this.
But the state works till 5 o'clock, do on Friday, not till noon.
Yeah, but so they would be closed on Christmas Day. It doesn't have nothing to do with Christmas Eve.
No, but normally if they wouldn't have the four hours off, though, they'd be working till 5 o'clock in Christmas Eve.
But the state doesn't give them the four hours off, does it?
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, the state offices close at noon.
Unless it falls on a weekend and it's just.
Yeah. And, and that's what they say, unless it is a holiday or weekend pursuant to.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to go with option two.
Which basically follows the state guidelines.
That's the way I see it.
I'll do roll call vote on this. Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh, I mean Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Too many Ms. Commissioner Franck?
No.
Chair votes aye. Motion carried. Ms. Piercy, since you are up here and I had brought up the, and I, I'm bringing this up for maybe more of a discussion, because I've heard from several employees when we were talking about the COVID pay, sick leave policy. There's some other counties that did, now with COVID going like it is, there's some other counties that did kind of go back to some of the 80 hours for the employees. That did not get their 80 hours of COVID. The deadline was December 31st of 2021, correct?
For our policy, yes.
Yes.
I'm not aware of any counties, though, that went that long, actually. And now this year, I don't know. I haven't asked.
There's one county that's kind of implemented some hours again. I guess I'm just looking for discussion on this, and we can bring it back. I, that's why we've got, we got the COVID money in the first place, is to take care of our employees. And I feel that them.
I'm not sure you can use it in 2022, though, but for salaries.
I mean, it, it could be used for salaries, not the, not the ARPA funding, but we still have money left over from the previous COVID funding.
I just guess I would like.
The chair is looking just to extend that deadline from the 31st of, that expired on December 31st?
For the employees that have not used up their hours.
That have not used it. And would it still remain at 80 hours? Or are we gonna roll it back?
That is up to this commission? I just think that the employees, when this was in place, and the employees that did get and utilize their 80 hours for COVID, and now we have, COVID is kind of back hard and heavy, and now we have employees that didn't use any of their 80 hours. And they're just.
Well, they didn't use it because they didn't need to.
Exactly, yes.
If it helps the discussion at all, I can let the commission know that, that we're, the court, the district court is taking it so seriously that we've actually suspended jury trials until, again, until March 1st, because so many people have been getting COVID. And we're not the only district that's done that. I believe that East Central, so Fargo, and I believe Burley South Central has also suspended their jury trials based on the amount of COVID that they're seeing, so.
Did you say suspended it?
Yep, that, so there won't be any jury trials now until March 1st because of the number of COVID that we're seeing. And it's not feasible to have juries come in and sit close to each other and, and things like that. So that, that's what we're seeing on our side.
Is there a staff recommendation on this?
Well, we've tracked it for two years, these 80 hours. And, I mean, administratively, I guess, we have not had any issues this month of people not having sick time to use. And I guess the guidelines did change, so now it's not quite as burdensome. They can come back after five days. So that has helped, too, you know, because if they do have to use sick time, typically they only use a max of, of five days. And if it falls on a weekend, it's even less than that. So.
Do we find it fair that the employees now have to use their sick time instead of any COVID pay, where previous employees did not have to use their sick time is what I'm trying to get at, too?
Yeah, no, I, I.
I mean, and this is not taxpayer money. I mean, this is money that we got, in a way, for this situation. And I just think that it's, I mean, we can make the decision next meeting or make it now, but I just think something needs to be implemented for the employees that did not use any of their hours.
Madam Chair, how long were you thinking about extending it? For six months, a year, nine months?
They say COVID's gonna be with us forever, so.
Yeah, I don't know how long you go on. I mean, that's why we give sick time, you know, they.
I mean, could, right now, do we have to put a timeline on it and go case by case? I mean, we could go case by case for the employees that did not use their 80 hours and have, you know, and then we can, I mean, we can stop it as, at a certain, I just think that this COVID and this outbreak right now is just like the one we had in the first place, where all those employees got to use 80 hours. And we still have funding. And I just, I don't think it's.
I mean, do we know how much funding?
We have, we still have quite a significant couple hundred thousand left of the 2020 COVID money. To me, it seems like a fairness issue. I don't know how you penalize someone who didn't get COVID for two years and didn't use their COVID funds and now find themselves in a situation where they have COVID. And the CDC and North Dakota Department of Health are still stating that if you're positive, you need to stay home and quarantine for five days. So to me, I don't know why this is even a discussion, quite frankly. I mean, I feel like we need to treat everyone fairly.
I agree.
And, you know, with the employees, even with their kids, I mean, if they're told to stay home, I mean, I just think that they shouldn't have to use their sick leave or vacation, that they should have the availability to use some of these hours.
Yeah. I, I think the only issue is how long you want to extend this.
Yeah, I agree.
So if, if we've been doing it 12 months at a time, I would move that we extend this to end of year 2022.
Or six months and we get COVID.
At minimum, six months. I'm, I'm open to either one.
Okay, I'll, I'll second that with some discussion. So is it retroactive to January 1, then, from, from when it expired?
I would suspect so.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And this would be just for, I mean, this isn't a new 80 hours. This is just for employees that did not use their 80 hours. And I, I agree with Ms. Inglestead. I just feel like, I just feel like we're penalizing the employees that didn't get COVID by doing what, you know, what we did.
Call a question.
Okay, Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Franck?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Boy, we're getting done here, huh?
I was just going to bring up from our last minutes on county meetings, there was talk that there was going to be some communication about county meetings for commissioners, and some communications, so commissioners could go to the small county meetings. And I don't know if there was any follow-through on that, or any emails sent out or anything on when those meetings take place. I think I saw in the minutes where Sheriff Lee, you were going to send out a calendar.
You said you had that information.
If you could please send that to all the commissioners, and then maybe the commissioners could communicate to make sure there's not three going to those small towns, so there's not a quorum.
Great. You know, and I don't think we need to have official policy or a motion on that.
No.
If a commissioner, if a commissioner wants to go to a meeting not related to Stark County, then go. And, I mean, I don't mind communicating with other commissioners by just sending out a text message that I'm going to South Art tonight, that type of thing, so.
We just can't have two, correct?
Pardon me?
We can't have two go to those meetings.
Two can go.
If you have a quorum that shows up and you have to notice it.
Yes.
If there's any county business.
Okay.
I mean, two could go, but three couldn't.
The law is you can't have a quorum.
Yes, yep. The Chanted Highway, Gary Graff, sorry about that. The Enchanted Highway, Gary Greff, sorry about that.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name's Gary Greff. I'm the designer builder of the Enchanted Highway. And I guess I'm coming to you for, I don't know what I'm coming to you for, I should know what I'm coming to you for, some assistance or some ideas and so forth to let you know a little bit more about what we've, we're sort of revamping the Enchanted Highway Board and so forth. We basically met with, we had hired a marketing consultant, Scott Mesky out of Bismarck, and then we met with the North Dakota Community Foundation and so forth. And basically, we're revamp, revamping the Enchanted Highway. It's a nonprofit foundation. And our board was made up of mostly family members to start with, and that's sort of ended. We're trying to get people on board that have some knowledge of the government, have knowledge of maybe dealing with oil and so forth and so on. So we're revamping our, our highway board. We also were told that basically we should be setting up a trust fund, which we're doing. Instead of just operating a little bit, we're putting money into a trust fund, hoping to build that fund to a certain amount. And then we just live, I mean, not live off, we can't make off the interest completely, but we would just use the interest for maintenance and whatever it may be. We basically have met with our legislators out in our area, which is Jim, Jim Schmidt and Karen and Don Shibley, and they basically said if the counties aren't on board, we're not coming on board. Okay, they said, this is a county road. Basically, you gotta show some, the counties gotta show that it's, that they may want this project. They don't want it, then we will not be on board neither. So again, I've put 32 years of my life into building it. And I know probably, I always thought that there's county or, I always thought there would be somebody coming on board to help with the project. Long and short of it, that hasn't happened the way I thought it would happen. And so now I'm basically approaching the county. I've got a board with Headinger County on the 9th, and I'm trying to figure out what is the next thing to try to keep the project going or keep it, I'm not gonna live forever. I hate to say that. I think I can, but I I won't. And so I feel that, and I'm, you know, I want to see it keep going. I, we get roughly around 6,000 vehicles come down the road every year, and that's, we got a counter out there, Headinger County, put a counter out there when we first started, and the road at the first time showed around 2,000 vehicles come down, which is locals, and then it jumped up to around 8,000. So we know those 6,000 vehicles aren't coming down because Regent is so popular. Okay, we know they're coming for the Enchanted Highway. Long and short of it, Regent, I've gone to Regent, the city council and so forth, they're trying this, they're struggling to keep the roads paved and so forth and so on. Okay, so they've said, well, what can we do? And long and short of it, I basically, just reaching out to you, is there any, anything that could be put into, we're looking at possibly if it could be put into a budget at, for maintenance, we're looking at probably about 5,000 a year. And we would like to say, if I could start putting that into a trust for a certain point of years, and then we would like to see possibly the upkeep of the county, you know, when they go out. And I I know our county people have gone out and they've graded my, I'll be honest with you, they, without asking you probably, they go up and they grade the, grade the geese in flight. I mean, they just said, we're out here, we might as well go up and grade it. So I appreciate that. I've, I've taken them roles and some stuff like that for my appreciation. I don't have a lot of dollars to say, here, thank you, but I I do appreciate it. And so that's, I'm just tossing out, I need ideas, I need something. I'd like to see it keep going. I really would. I think it's a benefit to the state. I know the state, I, I can't get the tourism on board. I can't get, they're basically saying, we didn't help Midora, we didn't help this, why should we help you? Okay, long and short of it, it's politics, and I don't play politics well. I'm a welder. And basically, I'm talking to you with, and I, trying to grasp ideas, what you might think might work, what I should do, what I can do. I write grants. Grants are far and few between. I get a few dollars there. We're now going to go out and try to get sponsorships for each site. If we can, we're talking to some companies as if they would give us 2,000 a year to help maintain that site. We'll put their name on the site to keep it going. You know, and the thing is, the bad thing is, that may maintain a site. But the thing is, like I said, I'm not gonna live forever. Okay, so I pass away, we know that the next person that comes on board, I donate all my time, I donate everything, okay? The next person that comes on board to run the Enchanted Highway, it's gonna need a full-time welder, okay? They need repair every year, they need this. Okay, I, I know we're gonna have to pay 50,000 to 60,000 a year for that welder. I, nobody's gonna do it for free like I have. I hate to say it. It's not, it wasn't their project. They're saying, we'll keep it going, but you're gonna have to pay. I've got a nephew said, yeah, I'll run it for you, but I got a family. I'm not gonna do it for free. I mean, it's a great project, it's a great thing, but we aren't gonna do it for free. So I, I'm trying to figure out how, like I said, I figure I got two more sculptures left in me. I figure it takes me six years to do a sculpture. If I do a sculpture every six years, I'll be 84 when I crawl up 90 feet in air. I don't think I'm gonna be doing that. So long and short of it, God willing, I'm hoping that he can provide me with that incentive. And long and short of it, I'm, I'm reaching out to you right now. I don't want you to basically say, yes, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do this. I want you to think about it. I also want you to, if you've got any, I, I don't know what to do. Honestly, I'm reaching out to you as a board, county commissioners, if you want, is it worth keep going with? Is it not worth keeping? If it isn't, tell me, and then I, I can go elsewhere. And basically, eventually they get cut down. And then, I mean, I know I can sell the metal. I mean, right now, that metal, I got 78.8 ton of metal out in the geese in flight, and I can cut that down. And I think I could make a few dollars there, but I hate to see it. I stuck a lot of years into it. So I guess that's what I'm looking for is any ideas, any ways you can think. Someone's, one of the board commissioner or the representative says, well, it should be put into a park district. Well, I heard the park district here asking for money, and I thought, oh, where can I get that money they got? That's only 1 million dollars. Oh, I gotta find out where she gets her money from. Oh, dang it, I'm, I'm in the wrong boat here. So long and short of it, I just don't know how. And I know, I know I'm gonna go to Headinger County, and they're not gonna have near the, because they don't get any oil thing, but I don't know. And then I, I don't know what to do. I'm just asking for you guys, consider something, maybe in your next budget or where, if you would consider the Enchanted Highway if it's worth keeping. And if it isn't, I won't feel offended. I will feel offended because I will be saying, as I stuck 32 years of my life in welding, trying to help. And I, and I, I started out, be honest with you, I started out with the idea that it was gonna help Regent, which is great. But I, long and short, found out that it doesn't just, it's not just helping Regent. It's everybody that comes down that road. We get cars from every, every state. I have a guestbook, every state in the Union. We have a number of countries that come in. When the tourism wants a, has a tour bus come in, they ask me to talk on the bus and so forth. So it's, it's really benefiting the whole state. I really, I really think it is. And I, I think it benefits Dickerson because people come down. I got the enchanted castle, they stay in Dickerson, they go, oh, if we'd only known it was here. Well, I, I have no way to advertise it. And so I, I'm, Terry Thiel and me, we get along well. And I, I have no qualms in saying it's part of Dickerson. We're looking with Midora now as when the library comes in, is doing a corridor, sort of a, where they will tour, Midora come down ours and go over to Lemon and so forth and so on. Now, but, so I'm, I'm, I'm open for ideas. I want, I just wanted to present it to you. I wanted you to think about it. I'm not asking for anything today. I'm just saying, if you could consider if it's worth keeping somehow, I'm, I'm not asking a big amount. Well, 1, 2 million would be good, but. So anyhow.
What do you want, 1 or 2 million?
Well, hey, just put me a trust fund of 500,000 and I can go, I won't ever talk to anybody again. But you can have that money. And I was trying to figure out how to do that.
First of all, you, you absolutely need to be commended for your efforts. I have friends who come hunting and they stay at, you know, they do the, the drive, they stay at your facility. I'm involved in a piece of property that has granted you an easement for one of your sites. I think you're selling yourself short on the 6,000. Every time we have people from out of town come in and we take them down there, every, I mean, every site is occupied, every site, it's an out-of-state vehicle. So I'm, I'm disappointed that tourism doesn't help you. I'm kind of disappointed that CVB doesn't help you. I don't know what the, you know, what we can do. I'd be certainly.
Well, I don't know where, I, I've gone to the, I just don't know where to go anymore. I mean, the, I don't know what, unless I, I'm, I'm thinking if I can get the county on board somehow, then maybe I can go to the tourism and say, okay, I, I'm just getting leverage. I don't know what I need.
Tourism, they're not shy on using you in all their brochures and everything else.
Using me for.
So I did, I mean, I'm disappointed they're not. Cherry at CVB, I mean, her funds are pretty limited ever since the city took all her funding away from her. I, I can understand why she can't help, but I don't see why the state can't help. But yeah, I think you were selling yourself short, as Commissioner Messer has said.
I mean, and it's definitely worth keeping.
I just, if I could make a real quick comment that, and I've known Gary for 25 years or more, and yeah, you put a lot of time and effort and blood, sweat and tears into it. I know that, and your own finances into it. So I think what we need to do is, you know, think outside the box a little bit about come budget time, what we can do on a reasonable basis to include whatever in-kind type of work we can do. Maybe it's a truck, truckload of gravel or.
Well, that's what the, the county commissioners, if they would, you know, they've been great at, I'll be honest with you. I, I've, I've been, I mean, they've come out and they've put score on, they had some extra score, they put it on the deer, you know, site. They come out and they.
I kind of thought we might be doing some of that, but.
I don't want to, maybe you won't, no, they weren't doing any of it. Sorry about that.
Nobody has to apologize for, for anything we've, we've shared with you on that, Gary. You're, but I think come budget time, we'll.
Well, that's all I'd ask is, is if you think of anything and if you know of any, I'm just trying to put something together so I can go to tourism and say, okay, here we revamped it, we did all this, we did all this. Now can you come on board? Now can you come on board? Are you willing to come on board?
Mr. Heiser?
I think with, along with that, we could, as the road department, keep his parking lots up. I know that Geese in Flight and Hills got kind of a nasty wash, so we've actually gravelled it and maintained it. So and I think we can continue to help out. And when it comes to the other money, you gotta get it from them, but I can help you with what I can.
That's all. It's been appreciated, it really has. And if I, you know, I'll go to Headinger County and say the same thing, you know, if they can just do that part of it for now, you know, and, and when the budget time comes, you know, if I can figure out another way, whether it fits into, I don't know what program it'll fit into. I mean, I know they said there's A, 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 R, A, P funds, whatever, it's a state thing. They're gonna get some money back. And they said, okay, if you can somehow leverage those, whatever, I don't know. I'm, I'm just trying to figure out.
You know, in 50 years, they'll declare it a historical site.
Yeah.
Well, I'll be dead and gone. I hope it does. I would love to see it.
It might be called the, the Greff Memorial Highway.
I don't want that, no. Just, just, that's what I wanted. So I, I appreciate your time. I thank you for your time. And, you know, like I said, I'm, I just appreciate it. And I just want you to know, we are revamping it. We are doing things, trying to make it so it continues. And, and when the next session or budget thing comes up, if you, if there's, if you can just look at it and figure out a way, and like I said, I, I, I need leverage. I need, and right now, I, I've never, I haven't, I came to you years ago, but now it's the first time again, and I, it's just because I'm not getting any younger. So thank you. I do appreciate it. Thank you much.
Okay, okay. Okay, is there any public input? We had put, I had did ratify the agenda for open records. We are, I'm gonna move that till the next meeting.
I was supposed to ask about the IT committee. I was wondering about getting Jesse Hoff on there. Is that a possibility?
I have no. It's Commissioner Marsh and myself and Shawna. And.
Okay, he expressed interest and wanted me to ask you guys. Perfect. And while I'm up here, I did want to echo what Gary did say about the Enchanted Highway. Obviously, we're out there patrolling it all the time. I, I think 6,000 is, that's way underscored. Those places are always full. And I also wanted to publicly say, as much as I don't like how flashy our new patches are, it was very nice to, to recognize you. It's nice to recognize you on there, yes.
It's very impressive. Thank you.
Do we need a motion to add Jesse Hoff on the committee? Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. I think then, okay, everything is complete. I'd ask for motion to adjourn. Second.